United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome to work session. First topic to discuss is paving projects throughout the borough.
Alright, we are in preliminary stages to get a bunch of road maintenance and repair done. We are separating our projects into repair and to maintenance. Pendot is assisting with the planning and advertising of the road maintenance projects, which are on Mincy. About two thirds of Mincy from Caldino to Mountain should be oil and chipped. And so Kevin O'Donnell, our municipal services rep is working on the specs for that. Pendot will write the advertisement for bidding and all that that goes along with it. And that doesn't cost us any money. The only thing we have to pay for is to post the bid to get it in the paper. The timeline for that ideally is that at the, he has all the specs and stuff and like the estimates and costs and stuff to us prior to our July meeting. And at our July meeting, we can decide how much of the project we want to do. Cause it's not just Mincy, it's also crack sealing. And he's gonna give us numbers for crack sealing every single street in the borough. So it's gonna be a huge number. We can decide then which ones or how much of liquid fuels we want to spend on that. So then at the July meeting, we would have a discussion and vote on the repair projects again. Mincy from Caldino to Mountain and, I'm sorry, maintenance projects from Mincy, on Mincy from Caldino to Mountain and crack sealing every borough road responsibility. Missy is working on repair projects. Shepherd Court, Cherokee. And the third one is the section of Mincy from Shepherd to Caldino where the road is coming apart. I have an email out to our municipal services rep to find out if Shepherd Court is on our liquid fuels inventory. Tim, do you know if it is?
I'm pretty sure it was handed over to the borough. There was a big, it was quite the clusterfuck when we tried to take it over from the developer. Cause I don't think, Bill, you probably remember this. I don't think it was maintained or it wasn't up to, like what, it should have been to return over to us?
Wasn't up to boroughs.
Right, well, the borough did not wanna, the developer went ahead and did it without any interaction with any regulations we had.
Yeah.
And after time, the people who were up there and built the houses were saying, "You should have us in, you know, in with, uh, we pay taxes, so we should have various things." And that went back and forth until finally the borough gave up and said, "Okay, we'll have it." It was a little path of least resistance, but we didn't bother to check any, the quality of anything up there. We just took it on because politically it was the right thing to do.
And I think it was dedicated, right? To the borough?
I don't know about that. Actually, it should be.
I think it was, I think it was back then.
I think you're right.
I think it was and it is on liquid fuels, but confirm.
Confirm. If it's not on liquid fuels, we can pump on Shepherd.
I think it's on our official map.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
But if we definitely get the liquid fuels for it, that is definitely out.
Yeah. If it's not on liquid fuels, we don't have the money to do anything with it this year.
Zach, are you doing the whole, the whole loop down there? I know in that one spot, it's really bad.
If there are spots that need cut out and Missy's and, you know, there's spots that need base repair, there might not be any base at all under this entire thing.
It's very thin.
Yeah, it's really thin.
So like Kevin, so Kevin is preparing the maintenance stuff, the oil and chip and the crack sealing. He's writing the bid documents so that when bids come in, we can choose to do the entire scope of the project or we can pick how much of it we want to do. He puts in language that, that parts of the bid can be accepted. Missy is gonna do pretty much the same thing, give us options where we can advertise all three of these projects, but choose to accept bits and pieces if we decide we can't afford out of liquid fuels to do all of this stuff from both repairs and maintenance. We can decide what we want to do.
Can I ask about the, so when we talked before, we were concerned about engineering costs. And then you got the municipal
Service rep.
Yeah. To help with that. Is that eliminating some of the costs of?
Everything that he does eliminates engineering costs.
What Missy has to do.
Yeah. And I think, I don't remember if he told me or if he wrote it in the email, that he said that if an engineer prepares the stuff, that we can use up to ten percent of a project cost from liquid fuels towards engineering. I think he said that. Oh, okay. We'll put a confirmation on that. So that if it's a hundred thousand dollars to pay all three, we could add ten thousand dollars and use a hundred and ten of liquid fuels. And ten could go towards engineering. If, if I'm correct on that, we'll make sure.
Yeah, we wanna make sure on that.
That we, yeah, so I wanna use liquid fuels to pay for anything and everything that we can. That said, we have a large chunk of money in liquid fuels. I don't want to blow that off. We've been saving for years. So I wanna be smart without a mulligan, just, you know, spend it all. So that's something that we'll have to discuss in July, I'm sure, I promise.
I tell you, it goes quick and it's expensive, so.
Yeah. I can give this on a real rough, oh, I have a timeline for Missy. Yeah, I'm gonna go over that. Missy did send me a rough estimate. I think she did. It's had a profit timeline, a bid form. Yeah, like Shepherd Court, she seemed to be about over seventy grand. Mincy being about thirty and Cherokee being about fifty. So a total of one fifty and that's three quarters of what we have in liquid fuels. So we're gonna have to decide and pare stuff down, maybe kick some stuff.
Definitely have to make sure Shepherd Court is on liquid fuels.
I haven't gotten the numbers yet, projected numbers yet from Kevin. And Missy is still revising the stuff. Timelineing. The, Kevin said the plants that do the oil and chip shut down at the end of September. So that gives us a fairly short timeline for the Mincy oil and chip maintenance project. He has proposed and said that he would get the documents with estimates and the bid advertisement language to us to be able to vote on at our meeting in July. If we get it advertised on July fifth, first business day after our meeting, it only needs to be advertised for thirteen days. We could make July's work session a special meeting and review and discuss and then vote in August on accepting a bid. Or we could just wait until August to discuss and, and accept the bid for the maintenance that Pendot's preparing. For the repair project that Missy is preparing, she would have us advertising the end of this month, because we voted on it in May, to have her prepare the advertisement and post it. There will be two rounds of advertising, but still just thirteen days. And we would have the bids in hand by Wednesday, the nineteenth. And we could award at the August meeting. Those plants, the asphalt plants, she says should stay open until mid-October. Does anybody have any questions from a lot of stuff out there?
I don't know about questions, but can we ask, anytime we have something bid that's requiring engineering, could we ask them for a approximate cost, their cost to us for those projects? And, you know, it's not to trap anybody or anything else, and it's.
And if I'm ready to ask, please.
Yeah, I'll try.
You ask, yeah.
Two. The roads, when they were doing, there's plenty of examples around town here where you see basically two lanes of highway. And in the middle, you see, if it's a wet day and it becomes dry, you'll see that it stays wet in the center there. Or if it's in the winter, you'll see this or that. The code, I guess you'd call it, or whatever, for the state says, they're cognizant of that problem. So you have to make your two runs that go together within a certain amount of time. If you don't do that, then you have to manually get a torch out there, propane torches, and heat it so that they come together. And many of the projects I've seen that are around the town have not observed that. And hence, you can walk around the town and you can see right where they came together, but they weren't properly treated. So we have to have the engineering company, one, oversee the whole thing. When they're laying asphalt, somebody should be there from the engineering company crew.
We did that on Cherokee Valley. We had Missy there. Missy had that gentleman come out to oversee that. Same thing when they seal the roads, you have to heat the road surface as well as the hot patch. Otherwise, it doesn't adhere. That's why a lot of them, we saw a lot of black pieces along the road the last time they did, they did that. But this tar and chip, I think, will give us a lot more life to the roads for a lot less money in the long haul.
Oil chip was a couple bucks a square yard. And paving is more than ten dollars, ten to fifteen dollars a square yard.
And that's if you don't have to mill.
Yeah.
You have to mill.
Yeah, that's just the material and laying down.
I would just warn the neighbors up there, cause it's messy.
Yeah, so what we're getting estimated, we're getting quoted and asked for bids for is not just the tar down and then gravel on top. They would then also do the fog seal, which is another layer of tar on top that keeps it from getting dusty. So you need to stay off it so you don't spit up tar for a couple hours. But you don't have that days and weeks of gravel and chips and stuff flying around.
So it's just on Mincy?
Just Mincy this year is the only thing.
Oh, sure. Not on Mountain Road.
Not Mountain.
And, and I don't know why you can't close that down, except for the people that live on that street for the day.
The day.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only three driveways on that strip, well, Caldino, Dr. and Ally.
Is there a priority list of most urgent to lease?
Not on paper. And it's open to discussion within roads.
Yeah, once we get the cost, we get an idea of the scope, more exact scope, then we can prioritize what needs to be done. I think if we can, if we can cover a lot of the cracks in all the roads and save the life of a road, cause if the cracks get bad, you lose the shoulders, then you, then you've got a real problem. So I think, you know, we, we probably lean towards trying to save that first as a priority and then, and then hopefully, yeah. But we'll have the benefit of the conversation with a guy from Pendot who does it every day.
Yeah.
I mean, we had a great guy before this guy, but now you met this guy. The good news is Zach knows a person that this guy knows and they were able to bond in their thing. So I think he's in our corner.
Yeah, I rode around town with him. He was really good. He's been with Pendot forever, knows his stuff, super helpful. And I don't have any problem, you know, reaching out to him and picking his brain and stuff through all this.
Yeah.
Can we, can we also, after the engineer, can we see that Chris has the time to stay and watch the procedure?
Yeah, we can get him scheduled to do that, absolutely.
We really wanna get on, we'll have better roads if we do.
Yeah.
And then up in, not Shepherd Court, what's the other place you're looking to?
Cherokee.
Cherokee. Are you doing the length of that? There's, there's some question about how much of that road that needs repaving the borough owns and how much we don't. Have you got into that?
I have addressed that with Missy, that on some maps, outer right of way goes up the Matheson's driveway, like twenty feet.
Right.
So I want that. I guess she'll check deeds and stuff to see how much of it is ours.
That's very good.
Because I wanna take care of everything that is ours, just cause it looks like a driveway. Doesn't mean it's not ours and can be handled.
And then the last thing is on this mess, we literally, I, I think, wouldn't you think threw away half of that material we put down?
Yeah.
And it was something to do with the temperature, the little cart they had behind, I didn't see any steam or smoke coming out of it. And it, it really, we were snookered. And I don't mind saying when I'm snookered, because I can educate myself a little more.
Yeah.
But, so, there's something, can you press the issue with them? How are you gonna do it mechanically? You're gonna do it with hot, you're gonna do it with cold, you're gonna do it with this stuff that fell off last time? Or, or, you know, really tighten it up for them?
Yeah, we need to make sure. Do they have some sort of guarantee that the circuit?
I was about to say, do you have a quality control stipulation in there that, you know, once the engineer looks at it, it is not, um, or, no, applied?
I realize, yeah, I realize there's only a certain amount that's doable, but I, I think there is one we really ought to press.
Well, you spoke of having the engineer have someone there to watch and then Chris backing that up, watcher watching the watcher. And then some sort of quality control, something in the contract that says?
The verbiage in the contract will dictate, you know, legally what we can get and what we can't. So we have to make sure that that, you know, our guys from Pendot, that we button that down with tar and chip, Zach, to make sure it's, it's built and done to their state specifications. And then, you know what I mean? And then put that in the contract. Then you have a latest stand on. And then when you get the bid, you say, "This is what we want."
There should be a quality control rate from the quarry. There should be a quality control rate from the quarry when they mix it up. Yeah.
Well, if it's done right, I'm sure Zach will push it as far as it can go on this.
Yeah, and I'll email Kevin and ask about type of.
Well, that too, yeah.
I'm, I'm learning at that here.
Just tell them, have somebody always complain about that, break down the middle of that junction.
He mentioned that, I think.
Just kind of offhand, you know, that, you know, crack down the middle always happens because contractors go too thin and that's where they, yeah. Does that reveal itself right away, or is that something that we don't, you know, we don't find out a lot?
Usually you don't see it because it's when the water gets in and starts to expand it. But yeah, go around town with that in your mind.
Yeah, I've noticed it before.
Yeah.
You see that one highways a lot, where it cracks in the middle.
And, and you can also, what gets me, you can see them that it never cracks in the middle, certain places have the township. Because I think that's because they're really heavy. They, they get somebody by the neck, you know?
That's all I have. If anybody else has any questions about those projects. I'm on vacation the first week of July and then again the first week of August, so I won't be at the meetings. So I asked Jack to lead any discussion about, about the projects. I'll share any buck I have over email at a time.
Can I ask one other question? I don't think I should pay more attention, but I don't. Have we gotten any grants for roads? I mean, everybody says, well, you can't get grants for fire companies. Boroughs can, otherwise, but is there anybody that we should look for a grant from? Because Shepherd Court is gonna eat money. You know, you really should tear it up and do it again.
Well, I mean, you got, right now, we're, we're working on applying for the D C E D multimodal. So you'd have two Pendot grants, multimodal grants.
Would that cover roads like that, you think?
I'd have to look at the exact wording of each of the grants. But Pendot has those multimodal grants that do.
Well, they, they gave us Cherry Valley, right, Zach?
That was all.
Four hundred and fifteen thousand.
That was all.
That was all the same.
So it wasn't road specific? That was just state money?
Actually, I'm still looking at that package of USDA stuff that I got from Matt Cartwright's office. I'll peruse it and see if there's something. The first stuff I pulled out was for water, because it was obvious to me that it was for water. The reason I wanna pursue those particular grants is because everybody around us is going for the LSA grant. Everybody around us is, the grants that I've learned and been pursuing is the key grants that everybody around you is applying for. So these USDA, with the infrastructure issue being a major issue right now, maybe it's something I can pull out and fish out that will be helpful. I will look for road specific.
For the mines.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the mines, whatever we can. Yeah, we agree. We get anything in that regard.
So I'll, I'll keep fishing for that.
Do we have weight limits on our roads?
What's that?
Do we have weight limits?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But they are not adhered to.
Well, that was brought up at the last meeting, remember? All the cars coming down Oak Street? You, you may not be thinking about Oak Street, but.
Well, when I hit the Pendot guy, I saw the trucks going up Mountain Road and he goes, "Where's that big truck gone?" And I said, "Up Mountain Road." And he was like, "I don't know."
I followed a triaxle up Mountain Road today.
Oh, yeah. I saw three two nights ago, two last night.
And it was loaded too.
Yeah, loaded triaxle, dumps.
I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have a limit on our side streets. I'm not aware of that if we don't. But we should if we don't, because.
Well, that bridge up there, the homeless center should have a weight limit on it.
So why don't we work on an ordinance? Try to figure out what the state allows and what the state wants, what their guidelines are.
We talked with Jeff Robach about weight limits.
Yeah.
Said that's a road that made a pun mirror, that you don't wanna go down because you have to spend a ton of money on engineering to determine what the weight limit can be. You can't just pick a number.
So can you?
Yeah, Tim, you remember that?
Yep.
He said that's not a, not a spot you wanna go to if you're trying to save money.
So there is, you don't think there's anything already in, written in?
Not according to him, though.
There's, there's a.
This is the type of road, this is what the limit should be. It's engineering.
There's a weight limit on Oak Street. There's a sign right here, right across from the Sycamore.
There's a sign.
Yeah, I think it's ten tons.
Is that because of the bridge?
No bridge.
No, I think it's just the road.
We need a bridge down the train station.
Waring, Waring is different than some of these. But you have state roads and you have local roads and then you've got Waring. It's used by everybody, the bridge people and whatever they happen to be driving around and all that kinda stuff. And it gets heavier weight usage than Oak Street does.
Well, I understand that with the bridge commission being back there and trucks coming through.
And there's a lot of problem with parking, especially that tour trolley, whatever they've got over at the castle.
Yep.
Cause when they park that, they park it totally on the turnpike. And it extends fully to the center of the road. And you've got people trying to go both ways on there. Now, what was it, a week ago, they, it broke down? And it just sat there, no cones, nothing, for a full day and a half, until they got somebody in to play with it. And when the people going through the castle or to whatever over there park on Waring, on the castle side, quite often, they're parked fully on the road. Castle's got lots of land over there. They can extend, they can put a parking lot in there, whatever. But everybody just wants to park on the road. Now, I beat them on my driveway, but the rest of it, you cannot get two cars passing there while all those things parked along the side. And with people ignoring this road closed thing and come take a tour or whatever the heck they're doing, some of them can continue on Oak, some go down, try to get on, onto eighty, mess around and then come back out Waring.
So somebody could, could say, "What about a one-way street?" It wouldn't be me, because they would hang whoever's freezing it up.
Well, you talk, I talked about make Delaware one-way part in here, cause that gets to be a real mess when people try to cut that corner off of Waring out of Delaware. But if we just told people they could not park on the roadway and enforce that, then you don't have to worry about one-way, two-way. You just get all of the junk off of the road. And that section from Delaware north on, on Waring that's got a sign, "No parking here to the corner," now that's a joke.
So there's no, there's not any shoulder there and the, and the trolley business? Parking in the street, there is area back there that they could actually have somewhere where that thing that parked would turn around or something? You know, like where they were gonna do the building they don't use?
Yep.
It could go turn around and not be in the street?
They got all that grass there, they can make a parking lot out of it if they wanna have a place for all their dancers or whatever to park.
Maybe we can take a look at that and talk to Larry and see. Cause I, I agree with Bob. I think one of the electing owners and the proprietors of Castle know we can't allow any parking there because it clogs up our, our road, which is not, not that wide to begin with. And if they would please park down at the end of the building, would you have that huge parking field they use when they?
There's parking all the way around in the back too.
Back. They're saying there's plenty of parks, but they all wanna park right aside of it, so they don't have to walk twenty feet.
There's probably repeat offenders to people that utilize this. So a couple of parking tickets, I think, probably would resolve the issue.
And no parking signs.
But you also get parking nosed into the back building.
Right.
And when you get those oversized pickups in there.
They stick out.
They got three feet of their hound end sticking out into the roadway.
Yeah, the only way to correct that is no parking signs and then write some tickets.
And what if you put parallel parking only, you get rid of that part of the roadway problem.
Also, maybe you have a conversation as to where the trolley is.
Moving and unloading.
And, and, and just stopping parking, leave, you know, for safe, for safety. And people be able to get around it.
Well, we can discuss that in roads or if the council wants to vote on doing something in that regard.
Poor Zach, I think did it once.
Was it?
Did he put some no parking signs over there or?
No. I've got to hook on this up. I've been thinking that we should put one just past the building, that grass strip where everybody, across the street from. Cause you have people park half on the road or just half on the grass when there are parking spots, you know?
Right at the end of the building, that huge field.
Right there, that annoys them.
Well, if we just say, "Do not park on the roadway anywhere in there."
I saw one a couple of weeks ago. It said. I saw one a couple of weeks ago. It said, stop at the white line. The white line was thirty feet beyond that. But they have a similar situation where they really couldn't put a sign right where they wanted it. Come to the line or something.
Alright, Big Mouth has a suggestion for that too. What we don't have in this borough where we have the white lines is written on the road, S T O P. Cause some of these people see that line out there, have no idea what the heck it is.
Yeah.
Or that, that's their excuse anyway.
Yeah.
But if you write those four little letters on the road.
I'll talk to Chris about that, see if he deals up to.
But you do it, uh, every place around, but you got a little white line on the road.
Yeah.
Well, his son's up there, looks good.
Yeah.
Hey, paint a lot of the yellow curves, it looks, brightens up the borough, looks.
Exactly, exactly. It brightens up the borough.
You know, signage is very important. You're gonna have, you wanna make sure it's bright and it looks good. The other thing Zach won't think about, I think we should ask your buddy from PENDA, uh, if there is a weight limit, for example, on the mountain road, without us doing any heavy engineering for the class road that it is. Uh, I'm sure Terry's seen him go by. I've seen him go by our house. These, these huge trucks loaded with fill, if there's a weight limit, I mean, that's just chewing up mountain road. You know, all those heavy construction trucks. And if they can come in another way or do something, you know, or if we have some kind of limit, we have the limit there, we put a sign up, we can enforce it.
So if they can't go up mountain?
They'd have to go up Todd's Gap Road. I'm talking about to have trucks coming up or Cherry Valley Road.
Or use a smaller truck.
Don't come out Cherry Valley. We just paved that.
You know, they have to use smaller trucks.
Don't make them lie in the road.
They have to use smaller trucks, right?
Unless, unless they come from Salersburg out.
Yeah, they could do that.
And they'll, and then go up Todd's, you know what? They're going to the Wellhouse Center, that's in Smithfield Township, let them use Smithfield Township Road.
Said that in the beginning. We, that was one of the suggestions in the very beginning of all of this, is the entry from the other direction.
Well, again, Cherry Valley Road and, and Mountain Road, which will be to take care of the problem. Those two roads, if we had weight limits on there, we put signs up, then we could always try to enforce it. Because right now they're, they're doing whatever they wanna do.
Why are they taking fill up there?
I have no idea.
That's a big question.
You know, I wish people from Smithfield would, would look into if they've got building permits, cause they've done, they've done things up there. If they're on, on the footprint, they can get away with it. If they're not, they need, they need a land development point. And I, I mean, I, as red, I can't do it, okay, but certainly residents of Smithfield can get a right to know or whatever to see if the permits are there for them to do it. Cause they've done a lot of construction. There's a Morton Building, I think, that was put up there and there's other things and.
They just sent up some telephone poles and uh, uh, some wiring companies and things like that there.
Jack, why can't you do a right to know? Anybody, anybody can do a right to know as far as I can tell.
He's a party of litigation.
I can't. I'm a party of litigation, as is the borough. You can do it. Kim can do it, anybody else can do it, but I'm saying if you're a resident of Smithfield, then you have a lot more, you should have a lot more leverage than somebody living in the borough of Delaware or Capra, cause that's where the facility is. But anybody can do a right to know. I can't right now. Either can Bill.
Who's bridges out up there?
The borough owns the bridge.
What's the weight limit on the bridge?
I don't know.
Same, same thing. You'd need an army of engineers to.
You'd have to have an engineer.
It should already be established.
We should do it yet.
Yeah.
It should have already been done, bridge was built in nineteen oh nine, I don't know.
Can you do a five-year repair on all of the bridges?
Yeah.
Not, not, not only that, you have to worry about playing with dynamite because if you get up there and.
Ignorance might be.
And you, you start saying, wow, this isn't, this isn't, they say, oh, let's do it, let's.
Yeah. Pandora's box.
Sometimes it better like.
Pandora's box, but I mean, as far as the, the, the class of the roads, Cherry Valley Road, Mountain Road, that's what, it's worth asking.
I'm referring to, to.
As far as weight limit. Anything else on roads?
I got nothing else on this stuff.
Anybody else say anything?
For Zach.
I learned far more than I intended to.
Backhoe.
Okay. Alright, uh, alright, I asked, I asked Allison to put our backhoe that we have sitting up here by the wellhouse, which is doing nothing but aging. We need to make it go away. Whether we sell it for scrap or we sell it to somebody, uh, I think we all have to put it on our radar. Uh, we should all get the specs, everybody on council and anybody out there, if you know any excavators, I had a call into uh, Jim on Cherry, on Cherry Valley Road. Uh, what's Jim's last name?
Benson?
Benson. I knew you'd remember his last name, Zach. Uh, Jim Benson had a guy that, uh, from, I think Columbia. They would buy used backhoes, they'd send them over there and they'd rehab them, you know, for use over there. So I, I reached out to him, uh, because he had, he had said that months back and I talked to him. I thought he said the guy's father was ill or dying and he had to go back and he wouldn't be around till May or June. Well, I talked to Jim today and either I misunderstood or whatever, but the guy himself died on, during COVID, the guy that did this. So he doesn't have a connection anymore, uh, for these used backups. So I have a call into a couple of excavators, including Bob Marky, to see if he knows anybody or he may be interested because they have the ability, they can fix it at cost and pick up another machine. I think the borough, if we can get four or five thousand dollars, it needs probably five thousand dollars worth of repair, as you remember the brakes don't work. Uh, and I, I can just read real quick, this is, uh, I asked Allison just to do a little research. And the borough personal property may be disposed of by sale or otherwise, except upon approval of council by resolution. In cases when council approves the sale of the property, council shall estimate the fair market value of the entire lot to be disposed of. Council estimates the fair market value to be two thousand or more. The entire lot or property shall be advertised for sale once in at least one newspaper of general circulation, not less than ten days prior to the date scheduled for the opening of bids or public auction. The date of opening of bids or public auction shall be announced in the advertisement, sale of the property advertised shall be made to the best responsible bidder. So if the value is estimated at more than two thousand, council would need to advertise it and open bids. Uh, if we wanted to proceed that way, we would need to authorize the advertising. Uh, and we could do that, uh, you know, at our Wednesday meeting. You know, tonight, if we had a consensus or whatever, we could be in a position to vote on that at our next council meeting, to go down that route. Yeah, now, what I did is, um, a little background here because it's been a while since we talked about that backhoe, okay? Um, we had a mechanic, Chris Kurtz. Uh, Zach and I met Chris Kurtz up there, what about a year ago, something like that. Uh, he works for one of the, the, uh, the companies that sells heavy equipment and repairs, I think up in the Canars, really. Uh, and we asked Chris to give us an estimate at that time to make it, you know, at least so you could operate it safely. Obviously, there's no brakes, so I, we told him, you know, hurry at the time to park it, don't move it, cause we didn't want any liability. But anyway, Chris's inspection of the J C P, he identified two immediate needs for the tractor to get us through the winter. Uh, thank God we picked up Craig's before we had to, but the failed right-side brake system is no fluid in it and the radiator is about to fail. He charges a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for onsite labor. If the brake system issue is simply a leak and the radiator is readily available as an aftermarket part, he anticipates the repair job taking two days and costing around five thousand dollars in parts and labor. That's just to get operating again. Now, if the brake system failure is more than a leak and a radiator replacement is not available, we would be looking obviously at a greater cost, uh, of time and material. Uh, roads, at the time, we said we were exploring options to replace the tractor in case repairs became, became unfeasible, obviously they were. The borough's water operator, Craig LeBarre, had a well-maintained used tractor he wants to sell. He is getting value to provide an asking price and specs, uh, a feather in our cap. Uh, Chris advised at a ballpark for a used unit, and this is a guy that, that he works on and sells them, similar to a unit we bought from Craig, would be in the range of thirty thousand to sixty thousand. What do we pay? About twenty-six or something like that? Twenty-eight. And a new one obviously costs a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, we could quickly reach a point where report repair costs were thirty, yeah, our tractor's about thirty-six years old, the one we have sitting up there, to give you an idea. Becomes a con- considerable share of good used tractor, of a good used tractor. Just, just, I, I, long story short, I, you know, I, I want it on everybody's radar. I wanna try to get the exact specs of what that machine is. We all have a copy of that. We all know or may know, somebody knows an excavator. I said I reached out to Bob Marky, waiting for a callback. Bob, for example, you know, if we put it out to bid, he could put a bid in and he might be able to fix it in-house. He could pick up another backhoe. A lot of times there's people that own farms or whatever and they wanna pick up a cheap machine and they'll work on it when they have time and mechanically oriented and they can take care of things like that. But I don't think we want it to keep sitting up there at the wellhouse, that it's only gonna get worse. I'm surprised it hasn't been, you know, uh, at this point, somebody hasn't done something to it. You know, we, we're lucky. I mean, it's right there, west of Neffert across the street and they can see it, thank God, but I think we gotta make it go away. Uh, worst-case basis, I think the frame alone, you could probably get maybe twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars just for the frame. But I think the way to go is if you've got somebody that has a mechanical ability to get it running again and pick up a backhoe for less than ten grand between the time they bought it and repaired.
Do we have any idea how many hours are on the unit?
I don't. No.
I don't think the hour meter works.
I would think after.
And it's thirty, it's about thirty-six years old. I mean, it doesn't always say anything, but.
Yeah, I think if we put an ad, if we put on the agenda, or put an ad for it, we can just put the specs and say, it needs repair work, come take a look or whatever. They could come take a look at us.
And, and, and put it out to bid. I mean, get the specs, you know, and do a, do a sealed bid on it or something, but I mean, we should all have a copy of the spec, so if you talk to somebody, you can talk intelligently, intelligently, it's thirty-five, thirty-six years old. It needs some things, may need some other things, come take a look at it. You know, maybe for less than ten grand, you got a used backhoe.
Did we buy it, Neil?
No.
No.
When did we, when did we buy it before that?
I think before that was a John Deere, wasn't it? I don't know. It's, it's been around for a while though, in, in the borough.
I know what can help us is, there was a problem with that and it was taken up to somebody on six eleven north of Stroudsburg.
Medico?
Yeah, Medico.
Medico, and, and the bill was more than ten thousand. So you can ask, uh, Allison, can she just fly with her radar those transactions and then you can present it to somebody, but we already spent ten thousand. You got this great machine.
Remember, you got, you got this machine who were in the market for that, we'll, we'll, we're not gonna, we're not gonna dupe that. They're gonna know. What it is and what it isn't. So they'll come take a look.
I, I understand, but there's no prohibition in going back and, and saying, oh, you spent ten thousand.
Well, the more you know about the backhoe and the service and the parts, the better off to try and sell it, obviously, but you're right, Jamie, anybody that looks at it, especially if they're a mechanic or whatever. The, you know, I think this Chris Kurtz, when he looked at it, when Zach and I were up here, he said, well, he said, the short of it is, if we're lucky, we're talking probably five grand for the brake system and a radiator on that secondary market. If it's a lot more than that, then it's a hundred and twenty-five, and, and he said you could spend as much as you wanna spend to rehab it. You know, almost kinda unlimited, but again, somebody in the, in the, in the business, you know, that has a garage and has a mechanics.
What's the farmer, you know, like, he wants it down back and he can do work with it.
Yeah, there's, there's a buyer for it, we gotta find him, that's all, so. Any free, I don't know if there's any free, uh, things online that we can use in addition to it. I think we, I think we gotta keep it on the radar, keep it on our agenda, get the things.
So they charge from the municipal bid? Is there a charge to use that?
I don't know, but we could put it out there. You know, put it, council governments on the, yeah, use backhoe, come look at it.
I, I've looked at things on municipal bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should put it on there and let that.
But, and I'm gonna add that, I, what Bill said about, um, putting all that money into that, uh, backhoe. Um, I'm, I'm actually ashamed that I voted to put the money into that. But at the time, we didn't know we were going to contract with Bob Marky to fix the water lines. And to replace that machine back then was a, a lot more than the twenty grand. And.
It was a swamp.
But, but if you remember Bill, what was the last dime that you put into that before that? It was probably ten years before that, that it didn't get, uh, any money put into it. So if you, if you average it out, it's two grand a year anyway, so.
You're right.
I had a brief phone call with the, uh, manager of our service center at work who deals with all kinds of stuff like this and asked him if he, or he could keep it as I have or start the word that we've got this thing. He wanted to know the specs and how many hours it had.
Oh, oh, which guy? I'm sorry, do you?
Our, uh, the manager of our service center.
Oh, good. Yeah, he makes those.
He knows tons of people who deal with heavy equipment. Um, and he seemed ex- interested in learning a little bit more about it.
What I think we should do is take, take a picture of the backhoe and then do the specs, or put as much information on a one-piece flyer, something that you can hand to somebody, like you could gift it all by a bunch of, and say, here, hand them out to anybody you think might be interested, call this number. They call the borough number if they wanna come take a look at it. Chris could take them up, show them the backhoe and that's how we sell.
Yeah.
But you have to have a handout that you can give somebody that, cause it doesn't, how many, how old is it, you know, typical information a buyer would wanna know.
Does it run?
Yeah.
It just has no brakes.
Runs on stuff.
It runs really well if you're going downhill.
Yeah. And a stiff breeze will disintegrate the radiator, it's barely.
I got a bid for the cemetery, so.
So that's the backhoe. Thank you, Jack.
Yep. Yeah, that's the backhoe. Um. That's about, I guess that's about it right now. I have, I gave, uh, I, I talked to, I, uh, Joe Widmer's tree service, I know, I think he met Larry up at Cemetery Tim to walk around to do a bid. I gave, uh, Terry a copy of his written bid, cause I saw him, uh, and I asked him if he got the bid in yet. He said, no, I've been really busy, but I'll get it in. And I said, well, either drop it off in an envelope at an overnight thing or drop it off to my office. And he dropped it off at my office, so.
How much is it?
I have a copy. It's, it's, here, let me give you the whole thing, everything he's gonna do. I think Larry took them around, so I think he wrote up what Larry told him.
So I'm just gonna give it back to you.
No, no.
We're gonna ask for this, for, uh, right in the budget.
Well, hold on to it for now. I don't need it right now.
Alright, we're gonna ask for this in the budget then for twenty twenty-four.
That's, that's a good price.
He's very fair. I, I mean, he did the trees down at Show Park, he did Ballantyne Gans, he saved them thousands of dollars. He, he's a hard-working guy. He's got two crews now, he's got two bucket trucks. The guy works six, seven days a week, owning his business.
We're wait.
He did a lot of people in the borough.
We're waiting on the third one. Um, he was there about a week or two before, um, Joe was there. We haven't gotten a bid on that yet, but.
Okay.
So far, this is the cheapest one.
The only thing I asked him to make sure that everything he wrote down there, he said, just do me one favor, Jack, whoever you give this to, make sure they look at everything I'm gonna do, cause I clean my jobs up, and he, and he said it will look.
I was, I was there with, with Larry.
Okay. Good. So I asked if you can save you guys some money, that's the name of the game.
That's awesome.
Terry, you had it too. Larry took them around, so I was gonna wait and give Larry a copy, but you guys are both on the committee, so might as well take them and I'll own your next meeting. If I see Larry, I'll give him a copy, made about five copies of the bid. And he said, you know, the timeline is depending when, if you decide to go down his road. Depends on the time of year, obviously, but now he's got ten guys working for him and stuff, you know, probably within thirty days or less.
Well, we don't have the finances, but that's why I'm asking to put it in the budget for, uh, next year from, from the borough.
See what happens.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, what, for budget, you want stuff by October?
Well, we start in October.
Yeah, we start in October, so just.
Well, I mean, w- w- we, we're not sitting on any, any kind of, uh, we, we have a, a trust fund that we can't even touch or, or, or we would have been in, dipping into that to pay for this, but we don't have savings accounts or anything like that to save for an emergency.
So I wanted to mention about, and we'll, we'll keep that in mind, make sure you submit it.
Do you have a copy of it?
Huh?
Do you have a copy of it?
I'll wait until we, we're at that point, cause then they decide what they, what they're trying to do and then we decide.
We're also trying to get a grant as well from E S S A.
Well, then, then.
I own that too.
That's great. And then the lower you get with the, the best bid, you get the better, whether it's this guy.
We'll, we'll do the same, we'll do the same deal. If we get the grant, then you, then we're not gonna ask for money. Same deal.
Well, while I'm looking for stuff, I'll look for that. While, while I'm looking for stuff, I'll look for that sort of benefit too. One of the things I wanted to mention, the DCED grant that we, um, voted to apply for, and I'm applying no match, um, Missy did a new estimate, given the increase in cost, and I have that. But she also let me know that the grant only allows for you to pay, use ten percent of it for engineering costs. And engineering costs have gone up, so there is, if we get the grant, there is a chance that a portion of the engineering costs we would have to pay, so I just wanted to mention that, we've already approved applying for it, but I just wanted to mention that, although I said no match, there's a, a s- a portion, a small portion, that may.
Over the.
We would have to pay, which would be in, not this year, whenever, yeah, so I just wanted to make a note of that.
Yeah.
From the new estimates that she provided.
And that grant's gonna be for exactly, is that for this project?
For the Mountain Road.
They, they do that, Mountain Road and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm still writing people and getting letters and.
Are there any other grants out there that we should be looking at?
No, there's others I'm trying to look at, I'm trying to get this application in, and then I'm looking for other things that we can, because I'm willing, if I can find something else, I'll apply for two grants for the same project, I don't, you know? But I'm trying to, to, to expand our net on what we apply for, because like I said, everybody's going, and then I was told that the LSA grant has less money than it's had in the past, so.
Yeah, it'll be less.
It makes it even worse, trying to get stuff.
Yep.
So, we're working on it. That's all I got.
Good, that's good. Yeah, so if we can get, I'll see if we can get some type of, get a picture of the backhoe and get a fact sheet, if you will, you know, we can use as a handout, that we should all have copies of in our cars, you know, when we talk to people or whatever, and somebody can hand somebody with the phones are on there.
If you're going to email, print some out, come out.
Yeah, email address or whatever.
No, if, if Allison puts it together, or she emails it to the council.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then we can bring it.
Print it out, as we need it to.
Yeah.
We need, whatever.
We just have to get, you know, as much information on that backhoe as we can, like Bill says, I don't know what, I hope we can find the title. I had no idea where the title was, hopefully it's somewhere in these filing cabinets, or somewhere, I don't know. I don't know if Bob Caffaker would remember.
We could probably apply to get it.
What's that thing?
We could probably apply to get another one.
Yeah, I'm sure we could if we had to, but we don't wait till we get a buyer, and we have no time, and then we got, to, to try to locate it or apply now.
You make notes, uh.
Search for it.
Look at one of those. Because, yeah, we should start the process to get a replacement, if we can't find it.
Yep. So I have one backhoe.
Any questions on the backhoe, or anything else, anybody have anything they want to bring up, call them out, anybody, anyone? Anybody else, that's it, we're done? You enjoying?
Well, Tim, I'm glad that's a good price, I hope that.
Well, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's the better price than.
It's a lot of work, though, too, he said, he.
It's a shit ton of work.
He figures he'd be there a week with, you know, most of his crews.
Well.
That's not easy work, you gotta work around.
He has to work, he, he said that.
You can't, you can't get a truck in there because of the headstones, you can't get a truck on the other side because of the apartment building.
Exactly, he said he's gonna have to climb.
You can't just drop the log.
You can't just drop the, the tree down.
He, and he does that, he climbed himself, I mean, he, he climbed.
When my dead ash tree.
Then he's out, yeah, and mine is.
Well, we, we had three taken down, well, one of them fell over onto the building, um.
Which you.
New Year's, New Year's Day.
Which, what, up by the cemetery?
It fell on, onto the, uh, apartment building.
Oh, jeez.
Put a, it put a, I mean, it was, thankfully, it was kind of close to the building, and the side that it fell on, I mean, it's pretty high. So it didn't have a whole lot of momentum to come down, but it took a branch right down through, I think they had to replace like ten shingles or something. But to get off, they had to bring in a, I, I think he brought in a crane, I'm not sure, I wasn't up there, but to pull it off, and then we just said, just put it on the ground and I'll clean it up. Um, and it saved us a lot of money doing it that way, too.
What did they, did they charge you guys for the, the fix of roofs?
No, that was on, that, that was their insurance, they paid for that, but, in fact, we're not even sure, it, one of the trees could have actually been
Your tree.
The, the, um, village's tree, because the, even though the fence, even though it was on our side of the fence.
Yeah.
The fence isn't true to the property line, um.
I, I, I think, uh, we, we are talking to Melissa, at least I talked to her, to let me know whenever, you know, they have crews coming in to do, uh, whatever they do, uh, to let us know, so maybe we can get them just to take a shot down that's costly.
Well, there.
We, we can come back to the council on this, or maybe even put it, may, maybe we should ask the council if they could put it on the agenda to have the question, can we get our engineering company to take a simple, inexpensive sighting of the property along the tree line? So, because of the, the, all right, some, Terry, we, we, we don't want to be in here doing all this work and fourteen thousand and five, oh, it wasn't all our fault. It was on someone else.
Yeah, there's, there is, there is one pin, I, I'm assuming it's the property line for the, on the one side, but, um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necess, yeah, it does, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say for a hundred percent sure that, that's the property line, but there is a pin in there.
Well, how about, how about the county overlay?
Has a survey been done for the overlay yet?
I don't know of any survey, it's, it's, or.
I'm not sure.
Ah.
Shoot.
No.
Could we put that on so we could see whether we could get the borough to spring for a nominal amount of money to get them to sign it?
What do you think it would cost, Bill, shoot that line?
Word that again, Bill. Or you could, you want to tell Allison?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put something on, yeah, uh, understood, sorry.
Hey, how's your jack? How accurate is the county overlay that they put together from all the deeds, you know, you, you can call it up, any of us can call it up online, and it shows you the address and the.
Yeah.
You know, the map.
Well, if, if you could call it up and, and bring it in, and, uh, give it to Allison.
You can get it.
It's not accurate.
Not, okay, well, see, I don't know.
Yeah, I spoke to somebody at the county a year or two ago about a thing, and said, you know.
Yeah, I would try, I would.
The right of ways here, you cannot trust that.
I would, I would trust a survey.
It's used for calculating taxes and it is fuzzy.
I see it all the time when I pull tax records on houses and stuff, and there's one right now where the corner's not right, you know, uh, based on, on the legal description and where the survey was done, and then you look at the tax record and show you, showing you an overlay, and it's not the same thing, so I, I would say, when in doubt, get a survey, and from a registered survey, and that's the only way you can be sure.
What side is the pin on, is it near the apartment?
It's on our side.
The other problem is the pin could have been moved.
I, I don't think the pin was moved, I mean, it's in a spot where, like, there's not a whole lot, there's not a lot of traffic, plus the fence is right there, too, so.
So you think those trees are on your property, the cemetery, that we're talking about?
I, I questioned the one that fell out, um.
I think they're on the other side.
Well, the, but apartments actually commissioned, the apartments actually commissioned the tree folks, I mean, before we even.
Yeah, they did.
Said they blew about it, they had already hired somebody, and, uh.
Yeah.
And it was, they had to take out a couple of other trees just to access the one that was sitting on the roof.
Yeah, just to bring it around, flap it on our side, which I'm okay with, because they were, they needed to go too.
Right, does anybody know?
There's really not much discussion, you gotta get it surveyed, before you go out and spend all the money to.
Yeah, if it's that close to the border, you're right.
Well, actually, that one, the one ash tree might, actually might be the, 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 um, apartments. And that's big, that's a gigantic, that's gigantic.
Get a survey?
Yeah. Well, somebody knew a survey, it would be a reasonable cost.
Yeah, we were trying to.
Frank Smith passed away, I knew Frank Smith, but he passed away.
How about the little guy?
Huh?
Who was the little guy that ran around calling everything demented?
Sounds like a lawyer.
Bob, Bob Felker was a survey, was it Bob Felker?
I don't know, I'll play it.
There was a Ray, somebody that worked with Frank Smith, but I can't.
He was a guy, last name's Pencil, is Pencil, I don't know what happened to him, I have not, and it's kind of weird, when you haven't heard from people since before COVID, you don't know if they're still around, they don't answer the phone. Actually surveyed my house two and a half times, and when he came the first time, he looked on the paperwork for the property, he was the, he was training under the original.
Survey.
Surveyor, his name was on my deed.
Okay, so he should have given you a discount, he didn't, I did, what, and what, when, how long ago was that?
Oh, it's been, I don't know, three years, eight years ago. Eight, I'd say, I paid him like two fifty one time, and then.
Usually it's a, it's usually it's a thousand to two thousand.
And then I paid him more for the fence marketing, and more for, uh, he got three times out of me, so he probably got about a thousand dollars out of me.
Well, that, that's, that's good, though, if you give him out three times a thousand bucks, and, and if we shoot that line there, and you can save a tree or two, and save off the cost of, uh, chomping down, Bill, it's a good point.
Yeah, honestly.
So you're gonna put that on the agenda.
Can't go either way.
Are we journeying?
I have, this is, Allison gave me the, this thing, the manual for the backhoe, so we'll keep this.
It looks like no one's ever read it.
Yeah, look at it, I mean, this thing is staying, I'm surprised it's still together.
Yeah, but the inside is all nice and clean, like no one ever read it.
Yeah.
And what year is it, eighty-eight?
That's about thirty-six years old, the, the backhoe, right, or we've had it thirty-six years, something like that?
Oh, I haven't.
I don't know. I don't know what year it is, so, but, see if they see a date in it, I don't see anything. Bob Gallagher was working here then, probably, right?
Yeah, probably roosted.
Trees is standing firewood.
Are we dismissed?
Are we a journey?
Oh, well, you need, you want some, you need some, there's, there's a pile up there.
Need a motion?
No.
Thank you, that's it.
There's a.